This meeting is called to order at six o'clock. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you for being livestreamed, but until we get our other location back, we're not on cable. At any rate, Clerk Wright will begin off with you taking the roll.
Okay, let's go trustee White. Trustee Frazier.
Here.
Trustee Martin.
Here.
Trustee Miller.
Here.
Trustee Bud.
Here.
Clerk is present, supervisor McNair.
Here.
We have a question.
Thank you clerk. Begin our meetings with an executive summary of the revised agenda. I'm gonna let you hold that because they put one on me. For our first board meeting of this year, I would like to hold a moment of silence to begin with for Officer Fred Sweet, thirty-year veteran, a devoted member of the Van Buren Township family, who recently passed away. If you'd all join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. Tonight's consent agenda begins with, which includes the appointments of Charles Coleman, Kimberly Knopf, Tammy Wall, Daniel Bellinger, and Denise Willoughby to the Recreation Committee. Approval of the appointments of...
Oh, the agenda.
What?
Adoption of the agenda.
You didn't do any executive summary yet.
Executive summary goes right now. Yeah, executive summary, okay. So basically, we're gonna be doing that. Then we're gonna be putting up two student reps to the Recreation Committee, Kennedy Plummer and Morgan Stuckey. We are then going to go for the approval of the Endowment Committee. People want to continue sitting on it. Dolores Hogan, Mary Corgel, Patricia Sobeki, and Helen Wiley. In new business, we're gonna have consideration of an intergovernmental agreement between Van Buren Township and Belleville to consider our, to continue our emergency lockup and dispatch joint services contract. We'll also have a first reading of an ordinance for some property being rezoned from C1 to M1 on Hagerty Road. And we're going to be having approval of a resolution to help finance some improvements to the Shuba Sanitary District with Van Buren Township. And we have, we're going to be considering approval of our proposed gateway sign for Van Buren Township. We also have, finally, two trucks for building and grounds, and we have two trucks for water and sewer we're gonna be looking to approve. That's what we're gonna do tonight. So let's begin by adopting the agenda. Can I get a motion to adopt?
Supervisor, I'm making motion to adopt the agenda.
Clerk Wright, in support?
I have a question.
Yes.
Regarding number four, where it says, "Consider approval of the proposed gateway signage designs." I thought we were approving the bids for those signs.
That is the overview wording, but the, if you look at the detail of it, your approval of the proposed gateway sign designs, you're approving basically going out to get bids for those designs.
Okay.
And we can discuss it at that time, too.
Okay.
Yeah.
Supervisor.
Yes.
I request you consent agenda item number four to be removed, be pulled and edited to the Frigidaire.
Sorry, need a motion on the floor.
Okay, number four.
Prepaid this January 2, 2020.
Okay, pull it out, make it number six. Secretary, could you make sure I don't miss that?
Let's finish the first motion.
Well, he's...
We were to...
Okay, so now I have, I have a...
Adopting the agenda.
The agenda, yeah, I guess you, pulling stuff off the consent agenda would be the same as adopting the agenda.
No, there's two different, two different items.
Okay. All right. We have a motion for the, we have a motion for the agenda. We have a second for the agenda. Hearing, note for the discussion, all in favor of the agenda?
I got people to talk.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes, thank you. Now consent agenda, adoption of the consent agenda. We already know the prepaid list of number four, prepaid list of January 2nd is going to be removed to become a new item number six. And trustee Martin, leaving off number four, could you please make the motion for the consent agenda?
I move we adopt the consent agenda as follows. Number one, work-study session minutes of December 16, 2019, board meeting minutes of December 17, 2019, prepaid list of December 19, 2019, prepaid list of January 9, 2020, prepaid list of January 16, 2020, number seven, voucher list of January 7, 2020, number eight, voucher list of January 21, 2020, number nine, approval of the reappointment of Charles Coleman, Kimberly Knopf, Tammy Wall, Danny...
Bellinger.
Yeah, I'm sorry. It says Danny Bellinger.
Yeah.
Todd O'Neal, Denise Willoughby, to the Recreation Committee with terms to expire February 1, 2021.
Support.
Number 10, approval of the appointments of Kennedy Plummer and Morgan Stuckey to the Recreation Committee with terms to expire February 1, 2021. Number 11, approval of the reappointment of Dolores Hogan, Mary Corgel, Patricia Sobeki, Helen Wiley, to the Endowment Committee with terms to expire January 5, 2021.
Support.
Thank you, I have support. Hearing no further discussion, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? This motion passes. We move forward to public hearing, which we have done. Correspondence announcements and presentations, we'll start over with Mr. White.
Presentations to the Rotary Menor?
No, this is not, we're gonna be doing your announcements first. I don't see the people here from Rotary right now.
Oh, okay.
You from Rotary?
No.
Didn't think so. Because usually Judge Parrott. Okay. So, go ahead.
Okay. With the announcements. Have an unfinished project you just can't seem to complete at home. Come to the Recreation Department on Friday, January 31, from 5:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. to finish that project. While meeting new people and enjoying some pizza, bring your own tools, supplies, and we will provide the space and pizza, $2 per person, pizza will be included. Must pre-register at least one day in advance, and children must be accompanied by an adult. That is on January 31st from 5:00 to 8:00, to the Recreation Department.
Thank you. Trustee Frazier?
The daddy-daughter dance is so popular, it's gonna be February 14th and 15th, and the theme this year is Galaxy Gala. You can spend an evening dancing with your little ones under the Milky Way. It will be an out-of-this-world experience for dads and daughters to share together. Dancing, light refreshments, and a special craft and photo. Register by February 7th from 7:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. There'll be no refunds, no tickets will be sold at the door. It'll be $20 per couple for Van Buren residents, $25 per couple for non-residents, and $5 for each additional child.
Thank you.
The Park and Recreation Department is hosting a kids' craft session on Saturday, February the 8th, from 10:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. Children grades five through, well, kindergarten through five will have the opportunity to make themed crafts, and it's $5 per child.
Thank you. Clerk Wright?
Presented by Michigan State University Extension, Learn to Make Cooking for One Simple and Enjoyable. Join the September Day's Senior Center for Cooking for One on Thursday, Sept., I'm sorry, Thursday, February the 6th. Time to be determined.
Can I say, "Go out"?
On Thursday, January 30th, from noon to 3:30 p.m., there will be free admission and transportation to the Detroit Institute of Arts via the Come Wander Around program. Enjoy a guided tour with refreshments, limited seating. Sign up at the Senior Center or call 734-699-8918.
The September Day's Senior Center will have their first cardio drumming class on Monday, February 3rd at 12:30. $3 per class with punch card, $4 per class for drop-ins.
Thank you. Does anybody else have any announcements at all? Hearing none, we've got, does anybody from the announce, the audience have an announcement that they want to make? Nope? Okay. All right. Next item is public comment. This is public comment on agendas, on the agenda, what we've got going on today, is anybody from the public? None? Unfinished business, we have none. First item is new business, which is to consider approval of Resolution 2020-02, which is the intergovernmental agreement between Van Buren Charter Township and the City of Belleville to provide for emergency lockup and dispatch services.
Through the chair.
Treasurer Bud?
I make a motion, we approve Resolution 2020-02, the intergovernmental agreement between Van Buren Charter Township and the City of Belleville for emergency lockup and dispatch services, and authorize the clerk and the supervisor to send the agreement.
That's the order.
All right. All right. Director Lorraine?
Good evening, members of the board. This item was previously discussed at this afternoon's work-study session. The current intergovernmental agreement between Van Buren Charter Township and the City of Belleville is set to expire in 2020. I am requesting board action to consider approval of Resolution 2020-2, intergovernmental agreement between Van Buren Charter Township and the City of Belleville for emergency lockup and dispatch services, and authorize the supervisor clerk to execute the agreement.
Okay, this agreement is pretty much the same agreement we've had for the last three years. It has a two-and-a-half percent inflationary increase every year. We're proposing three years at two-and-a-half percent. We need to approve it, and then Belleville needs to approve it. Any questions?
Trustee White?
As I stated during the meeting earlier today... If I recall correctly, the first agreement was made in about 2010 to 2011, when I was supervisor, and it took us several months to get this through and get the wording correct and to get Belleville on board, because Belleville came to us and agreed to it, and it is for dispatch and also for lockup. And it's just a matter then of determining the annual cost and what the increase was gonna be. And we are still doing that to help our sister community, and it appears to have worked out very good for the City of Belleville and also for Van Buren Township. So, again, I fully support this and think it's something that'll work to both communities' benefit.
Anybody else? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye. Aye. Opposed? Thank you. We'll send this over to Belleville and see if we can get speedy recovery from their council. Next item is number two, which is consider approval of a first reading. I need a motion, and I need the person to make the motion to read it.
I'll make the motion.
Trustee Miller?
To consider approval of the first reading of ordinance 01-21-20 to rezone a portion of parcel, what is that, 5?
Otherwise known as 8001 Hagerty Road from C1 General Business District to M1 Light Industrial District.
Director Powers, could you please give us an overview of this?
Okay, I can. Thank you for having me again. This was discussed at our work-study session earlier today. Chair, would you mind if I added some...
Oh, sure, yes. Yeah, great.
And this may help to explain the nature of the zoning request, it's also on the screen. What you are being asked to consider is the first of two readings for adoption of rezoning resolution that was recommended by the Planning Commission. Planning Commission recommended approval on December 11th at their regular meeting, and it is the Township Board's responsibility to consider adopting a constitution to rezone for the Mission Zoning Enabling Act and for our zoning ordinance. So, I'll run through the purpose of this rezoning, to my understanding, and there's a gentleman from DTE Energy here who can also speak more specifically about the proposal from his standpoint. But the proposal is to rezone a narrow strip of property roughly 82 feet wide by 595 feet deep, that is Zone C1 or General Business to M1 Light Industrial. This is a strip of land that's on a property related to some development by DTE Energy. The purpose for the rezoning request is, one, as part of development, and bringing this site together as one picture, it's good planning practice to make the zoning consistent across a site. There's also a parcel combination as part of this proposal, so it's good planning practice to make zoning consistent across a single parcel. And in this case, the combined zoning allows for the site to be used with, with the buffer remaining intact from adjacent property rather than from a buffer from a zoning district line that falls within, within their property. So it sort of cleans up the way that zoning regulations are overseen for a site like this. There is no development proposed over the strip of land in red there where the rezoning is requested. The development will occur on land that is already zoned appropriately as M1 Light Industrial, and the purpose is really to make the site whole in terms of zoning, and the zoning is consistent with what the property is being used for as well as with the master plan. So from a planning standpoint, staff recommends approval of this ordinance to rezone.
Okay. I know trustee Martin wants to go, but trustee Miller, you made the motion?
Come right ahead.
Okay.
Trustee Martin.
Okay. There you go. Trustee Bud, did you wanna go? Okay. Trustee White?
I want to thank Director Powers for creating a much more distinguishable outline of what we're approving tonight. Outstanding. Thank you, sir. You're welcome.
Okay.
Through the chair.
Trustee Frazier?
I'd just like to say that it just makes common sense to have everything zoned M1, and that that's why DTE would like that to happen, so they have the setbacks and the buffers in order to build another building if they so desire.
I have a motion by trustee Miller. It has been supported by treasurer Bud as a first reading. First reading can be voice vote, right? All in favor? Aye. Aye. Opposed? Thank you, we'll move on for second reading at our next meeting. Thank you. Number three, to consider approval of Resolution 2001, which will initiate the process for the refinancing of the Shuba Sanitary District System Improvement Refinancing, Refunding Bonds.
Through the chair.
Treasurer Bud?
I make a motion, we approve Resolution 2020... And it is, Chair? Chair?
Yeah, yeah. Right.
I make a motion, we consider approval of Resolution 2020-01, which will initiate the process for the financing of this Shuba Sanitary District for system improvements and refunding bonds.
Support.
Okay. Trustee Frazier? All right. So, Executive Assistant, could you please give us an overview?
Absolutely. Good evening, board. In December of 2019, the South Huron Valley Utility Authority Board, Board approved a $30 million capital improvement plan. In order to fund the 10-year plan and achieve debt savings on 2010 bonds, the Shuba Board decided to issue tax-exempt bonds. In order to meet the deadlines for advertising the bonds and other public posting requirements, the communities of Shuba are being asked to individually approve the resolution. Payments are scheduled to begin in fiscal year 2021. The annual obligation for the township between 2021 and 2043 ranges from 291,000 to about 378,000 per year. So at this time, we would recommend to the Township Board to approve Resolution 2020-01, which will initiate the process for the financing of the Shuba Sanitary District for system improvements and refunding bonds.
They're doing some upgrades to sanitary system. We have a portion of it to come up with, about seven-and-a-half million dollars. This document is to be signed by us and all the other members of the Shuba, all the other municipalities, which are, Treasurer Bud sits on that board. Could you tell us more?
Gibraltar sits with us, Woodhaven, South Rockwood, Flat Rock, Van Buren, Gibraltar, and Huron Township.
All right.
And this will do a lot of plan improvements besides, it's gonna develop a de-watering system because spreading the sewage on fields has become a problem, so we have to figure out someplace else to take care of that. So we'll include that. So it is quite an extensive project, but one that's much needed.
Any other questions? Trustee White?
Will this cause an increase in the residents' sewage fees, and if so, approximately how much on a quarterly basis?
So Director Taylor is working diligently with the Treasurer's Office to explore all possible options for funding. They're looking at cash reserves and other things. As of right now, there's no increase on rates.
Thank you.
Through the chair.
It is a cost to the system, it's going to affect some of the rates. Yeah.
So, if we do have a sewer, small sewer rate increase, it'll be well worth it because we certainly don't want to have a problem like, I can't think of the name of the city that just had maybe possibility of sewage being washed up on people's yards. So, you know, we want to improve, and if we have any new growth, this'll help with that, too. It's well needed.
Harrison Township.
Yeah, Harrison Township, I think it was, yeah.
Like St. Clair.
I just did some down and dirty work. It looks like it would impact about $20 a quarter.
I'm sorry, didn't, I didn't hear.
I'm guessing $20 a quarter impact.
An increase of $20 per quarter?
Yeah.
Okay.
But it's just, that's some real down and dirty stuff.
Through the chair.
Yeah.
I don't want to refute what he said, but what we're looking at is, the Water Department has reserve for these kind of a projects. So it might be, when we study rates, it would be minimal that we would have to extend to the residents. That's kind of what we're looking at right now because of the reserves we have for those kind of projects.
I love to hear that. Thank you. I'm glad I'm wrong. Okay. We have a motion by treasurer Bud. We have support by trustee Frazier. All in favor? Aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Next item is to consider approval of the proposed gateway signage designs, to put them out to bid.
Supervisor.
Yes.
I...
Are you, are you making a motion or are you making a question?
No, I'm making a motion.
Okay.
To consider approval of the proposed gateway signage designs as presented.
Support.
Okay. This is something that's interesting, so yes, please do the overview.
Alrighty. So the Downtown Development Authority and Van Buren Township have partnered in order to invest in our front door. So we want to be able to welcome people into the township and continue to work to create a familiar and recognizable brand within our community by developing a gateway sign program. So what is the big deal about gateway signage? Using gateway signage, we can target four different groups of people to help strengthen relationships within our township. The first one, we want to quickly set first-time visitors' expectations about our community. We want to make an impact with people that are coming into the township for the first time. Our signs should be able to represent how we feel about our community and the premier services that we offer as a township. The second one is to help to develop a sense of township brand identity, level of comfort and pride in established community members. So for our community members that have been here for a while, we want to continue to develop a brand identity that people can become familiar with. BBT is consistently working on this, and with our communications team, we're working on putting out consistent branding that is high-quality and attractive. Third, we want to clearly identify the township to attract visitors of surrounding communities to visit our township. Someone that's driving in Canton drives into our township through our main thoroughfare, they should know that they're entering Van Buren Township. And lastly, we want to increase general knowledge of the township throughout the southeast Michigan region. We want our signs to be able to be talked about and envied by other communities, we want the signs to allow individuals to become, feel welcomed within our community. So in September of 2019, Van Buren Township partnered with Ideation Orange, a Michigan design group that specializes in wayfinding signage, to help facilitate creating a gateway signage program for our community. As part of the project kickoff last September, staff worked alongside township trustees to gather input on what the board would like to see in a new gateway sign. They then took that feedback and created design concepts that we're presenting to you now for your approval. Once the Township Board approves the sign designs, plans and specifications will be developed, and we will put the signs out to bid to determine a project budget going forward. Once we get those bids back, we'll come back to the Township Board at that time to recommend a multi-year phasing plan and a budget for the project. So just to refresh your memory, these are the questions, an email that was sent out in September 2019 to the Board of Trustees, asking for them to respond. So the answers received from the trustees were utilized by Ideation Orange to capture the spirit of our community and transform your vision into the township's gateway sign designs. So we had a welcoming first impression, artistic yet functional and easy to read, connecting the signs to the brand and the surrounding environment that already exists in the township, utilizing timeless forms and materials with an eye towards future township momentum and progress, and having a foundation for use for future sign initiatives, so having downtown wayfinding signage and park signage. So keep in mind that there are two different signs in the sign family that we developed, a large sign and a small sign. Depending on how the bids come in, the large signs would be focused on the major entryways of our township, and the small signs would be used at secondary gateways into the township. So this is the proposed large gateway sign. It incorporates aspects of red bricks seen around the township, our Van Buren Township blue, our logos, and the words "A Lake Community." The sign stands about 15 feet tall and 10 feet across. The masonry stone wall behind the two sign panels provides a contrasting material to add depth and balance. The sign is able to be lit at night as well, as you can see here. These images show the gateway sign from different angles. And after comments made by the Board of Trustees, we wanted to show you what the one rendering looked like with the letters reading vertically. And keep in mind that this rendering of the sign is actually about, a little bit more than five feet taller than the one that we're proposing to go to bid for. So if we were to do vertical wording, it would be much smaller than that and shrunken down even more. So this is the proposed small gateway sign in the sign family. It's created with Van Buren Township blue and pulls from design elements from around the township, as well as elements from the large gateway sign to make a cohesive feel. And then these images show the relative sizes of the sign next to a standard merged sign. Keep in mind that these signs are meant to be viewed as you're driving by in a car. At this time, we're recommending to the Township Board that the proposed gateway sign designs are approved. At that time, we'll develop specifications and put the signs out to bid. Please let me know if there are any questions.
We begin with trustee Frazier, then to Miller.
Just wondered if those, I'm assuming that those little drops underneath the sign...
They're like waves.
Yeah, are...
Represent water.
Water. And are they blue? It's kind of hard to tell.
So they're actually cut out from that?
Oh.
Or no, actually, we changed it. They are blue.
They are blue?
They are.
Okay. Yeah, I think the blue is, is good because, you know, you understand that it's representing water and that we're the Lake Community. Okay.
Moving over to the maker of the second one?
Yeah. You said that you sent out a survey to the Board of Trustees. Did you get full support from the board on that?
Yes.
Good to hear. So, once these bids come back, the supervisor mentioned that we could have these signs up by, they can start them by April?
I...
And how do you decide where they go?
Well, actually, you're, actually, they're not built into our budget currently. So anything we do, we've got a little bit of money built into our budget, but you're gonna have to just help us decide, because quite frankly, they're gonna be a lot of money for the big one and a little bit of money for the little one.
But also the DDA will partner with us.
Absolutely will.
Can you explain that?
We're looking at hospital, putting one of the signs on Belleville Road near Culvers.
So in the DDA district, okay.
Anything we do has to do with it.
Sure, absolutely. Thank you.
Yeah, so, yeah. Are you wondering if you're gonna have another shot at where they're going to go?
No, I'd like to know, yes. And I'd also like to know when...
I can't imagine that we could actually purchase, we have, if we are actually going to go out to buy them, we are going to have to come back to this board because there's not a...
But if they're partnering with us, the DDA, we... But if they're partnering with us, the DDA, we have to put them in the DDA district?
As a group, when we sat and did all of this, we did identify certain areas that we thought would be a larger gateway and a smaller gateway sign. So we do have that map, but we personally need to find out what the costs would be before we can prioritize those.
And when you said possibly by Culvers, are you talking the small one or that one?
We're looking at the larger one.
Alright.
And I've already reached out to MDOT, has not gone to our board as of yet, though.
Alright, thank you.
Trustee, anybody else want to comment? Hearing none. Okay, hearing none. I have a motion by Trustee Fraser, supported by Trustee Miller. Hearing no further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much, ladies. Okay, moving on. To consider approval of the purchase of two 2024 F-250s to be utilized by the Building and Grounds staff at a total cost of $61,000, and two 2024 Ford F-150s to be utilized by water and sewer staff at a total cost of $55,000. Through the chair. Trustee Martin.
I move we approve the purchase of two 2024 Ford F-250 trucks to be utilized by the Building and Grounds staff at a total cost of $61,646, and two 2024 Ford F-150s to be utilized by water and sewer staff at the total cost of $55,840.
Trustee Miller? Alright, Director Best, could you give us an overview?
Certainly. Oh, thank you. The Department of Public Services is recommending the approval, the purchase of two 2024 Ford F-250s. These vehicles will replace two trucks in the current Building and Grounds fleet. They will replace truck 711, a 2007 GMC Sierra 2500. This truck is currently a salt spreader and plow truck for the Building and Grounds Department. Age combined with wear and tear has put this vehicle's use as a salt spreader and carrier, a heavy hauler of salt. It's not really ideal to do that anymore. This truck will be transferred if a new purchase is made of a F-250. This truck will be transferred to the Parks and Recreation Fleet for continued use as a light vehicle. Truck 525, a 2008 Ford F-150, is being replaced due to age and use limitations. It cannot be used with a plow or a salt truck. This truck will be transferred to Parks and Recreation Fleet where it can be used for day-to-day operations. Both of the new F-250s are the XLT or XL series, which is lower than the XLT series. It's the lowest series that you can get. It has only the equipment on it that is necessary for snow plowing and trailer hitch hookups, as well as the stuff that comes on it that will cost you a lot more money to take off if you just leave it on. The price for the two trucks, each truck costs $30,823 for a total cost of $61,646 for the Building and Grounds. Those vehicles are coming out at $38,830 for retail each, so we're getting a huge savings on that vehicle. The Water and Sewer Division also has two trucks that they'll be potentially purchasing, two trucks to replace. They will be replacing them with two Ford F-150s. The first is a vehicle 516, which is a 2004 GMC Sierra. This truck is driven daily and is being replaced due to age and mileage. This trucks will thankfully and faithfully be disposed of at auction. We also have a 2005 GMC Savannah, truck 517. This vehicle will be replaced due to age and potential large repairs that have been identified and diagnosed. This truck was driven daily for Water Sewer Division operations. This vehicle will be disposed of at auction. These vehicles, these F-150s, come in at $27,920 each for a total of $55,840. The sticker price on the vehicle for the F-150s was coming in at $36,000, so we're also, $36,010. So both the Water and Sewer Department vehicles and the Building and Grounds vehicles are being purchased through Atchison Ford. Atchison Ford is actually beating the state bid price by providing these vehicles, and it is my understanding that as soon as we get the checks cut, we should be able to take possession of these vehicles as long as there's no problems with delivery. With that, I'd be happy to answer any of your questions about these vehicles.
Thank you. Trustee Martin, you've made the motion.
Through the chair. These vehicles that are being replaced are, the Building and Grounds vehicles are 13 and 12 years old respectively, and the Water and Sewer trucks are 16 and 15 years old respectively. I think it's time for them to be replaced. Director Best also noted that the Building and Grounds trucks will still have three to four more years of service left than...
Light service.
Light service. And that'll be used by the Recreation Department, so for taking trash from the parks and everything. So we can still get more life out of these other two vehicles. So I think this is a good purchase.
Trustee Miller?
So out of curiosity, how do we dispose by auction? What actually happens there? What is the process?
So what happens is we contact, we have, we work with a local auction company that also does our police department auctions. The vehicles are picked up by the auction company. They are put out to auction in a large auction, which is multiple vehicles over multiple days. And then we get the, the proceeds are sent back as a check to the clerk's office where they are deposited in the appropriate account.
Alright.
Lots. Okay. Hearing no further questions. I have a motion by Trustee Martin, supported by Trustee Miller. Hearing no further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? This motion passes. Thank you very much, Director.
Thank you, Board.
Item number six is the prepaid. I guess we can start off...
Through the chair.
Thank you, Treasurer Bud.
I make a motion we approve the prepaid list of January 2nd of 2020.
Support.
Treasurer Miller? Okay. Alright, so we'll bypass everything. Trustee White, what is your concern?
Well, I have a concern here, and it shouldn't have been approved until this was discussed.
Okay.
Okay, so I think that we're wrong in approving something before we discuss something because it hasn't been discussed, and I have a couple of issues.
It's not approved until they vote, so go on.
We haven't voted yet.
Okay. In the Supervisor's office, Supervisor purchased a new Oakleaf table for $2,049.
Oakleaf.
And a conference table for $1,655. So this is close to $2,700 for a conference table and a desk in Supervisor's office. I think that is a pretty outrageous price to pay for something. I'm sure that there's options in there, but it would have been just as good as what was paid for. I mean, we are not a Beverly Hills or a California community, and we should not pretend that we are, and we should be somewhat conservative with our taxpayers' dollars in how we spend it and move forward with it. Also, on another one, after we've discussed that, there's a missing receipt for $25 from the Supervisor's office also. And if you recall, a couple of years ago, when I went to a conference in UP and I came back across the Mackinac Bridge, I had a receipt for $2.50 and it got misplaced. And for whatever reason, the board would not approve $2.50 for me on a lost receipt. And I'm asking the board to give the same consideration to McNamara on a receipt of $25. I actually posted a picture of that receipt, and in the receipt line, there is no dollar value listed. It is clear, zero, zero, nothing, nothing. The receipt line, or the payment line, actually, there's nothing listed in the payment line. And...
So you talked about the $25 parking, parking unit?
It's not on the receipt that you received, Kevin, that you put out a picture.
Okay.
And there's nothing on that. So how can you expect us to approve a missing receipt without a dollar value on it?
Okay.
And there's nothing in there. I mean, you should suck it up and pay the 25 bucks and let's move on. I paid the $2.50, you know?
Okay.
You're not a privileged person on the board.
Excuse me, are you going to allow me to talk? Or you're just going to keep on rambling on forever?
After I get done, because you're interrupting me when you says, you know, and you're...
You're going around in circles.
Twenty-five bucks is 25 bucks, okay? I don't care how you present it.
Tell me when you're done.
Okay.
I thought we decided that we weren't going to pay when we didn't have no...
We are going to pay.
He did bring a receipt.
But he's wrong if you believe him.
Give us a receipt. But there was no dollar value on it.
He won't let me.
There's no dollar value on it.
I know, but I thought we decided we weren't going to pay for no receipts.
Okay.
If you had no receipt, you didn't get paid. That's what we discussed after we had this incident. And I'm pretty sure it passed. So when you have no receipt, you shouldn't even be presenting it to the board for payment.
He has a receipt, but there's no dollar value on it. It's blank.
Oh.
So he could put any figure he wants to in there.
Oh.
And he sent a receipt to everybody.
Okay. Alright, first of all, it was a receipt against a $25 credit card, so therefore I couldn't put any value I wanted on it. It was $25.
Credit card has nothing to do with it, Kevin.
Secondly, yes, yes.
You get a receipt for a credit card.
Excuse me, you really need to let somebody else talk in this board.
No, go ahead and talk.
Okay, so I was, I went down to meet with Department of Roads at Wayne County. I went into the parking garage. I came out. I put my little card in there, out. The door opened up and no receipt came out. I then called over to the attendant and said, "There's no receipt here. I need a receipt." Absolutely. The attendant didn't want to help me out at all. He finally came over, scribbled something out, and handed me that receipt that I got. That's all I got.
That said zero?
He didn't put the number, because the credit card had the number on it. He basically just signed off that here it is. He actually put the wrong date on it, too.
But it's matched with the $25 receipt through the credit card, is it not?
Yeah, the $25, the credit card literally says Miller Parking Garage on the $25. Miller Parking Garage, $25.
Actually, the garage receipt was for Executive Parking.
That's what they call every word out there.
That's what the receipt says, Executive Parking.
Yeah, well, it's right next to the DPS offices off Random Street. It's the garage.
Doesn't make a difference.
It's the Miller Parking Garage.
But I thought...
The receipt did not have a...
So do you have any other questions?
Okay, I thought, and I just want to clarify this with the other board members. We had this incident of no receipt. We discussed it, at my memory, a pretty lengthy discussion on it, and we decided if you didn't have a receipt with how much you paid, we would not reimburse the person for the charge. I thought that's what we decided.
Treasurer Bud?
The discussion was the difference between a charge card and a request for reimbursement. Mr. Treasurer, or Trustee White had asked for reimbursement, and he did not have a receipt.
Correct.
That's why they said we would not pay it because there was no receipt.
Isn't he asking?
Now, wait a minute. The charge card was charged $25 when he put it in the machine, and it said it was for the parking garage.
Why doesn't he provide that?
It was on the receipt when it came with the charge card.
It was, they actually like a receipt on the side to justify the line item. I don't know why, but they do. So that's why I made them give me a receipt.
Why would you...
They like it that way here.
It's two different things, Sharon.
Okay, why would you not show us the charge card expense?
He did, he did.
When the charge came through, it said $25 for parking garage.
Then why isn't that provided to us?
It is in there.
It is in there.
It's in there. It says it.
He did not have...
Oh, it came later.
Yes. Dan sent everybody an email saying, "This is how come it's missing. It's a parking garage. It didn't come out of the machine the way it was supposed to." So Kevin had to go to the attendant who wrote it up. The difference is, that was a charge. We knew exactly what the charge was. We knew who made it. We knew what it was for. When the other thing happened on a reimbursement, he was asking for money that he had, that he did not have a receipt for, and that's what we don't pay.
Mother, we have the credit card receipt here to show that it was on that, okay? You're giving, just like, we have a problem on this board of not getting complete information. And we always have these discussions, and we should have had a credit card receipt if that's the issue when you have a missing... Look, all I'm seeing is a missing receipt for $25. I have to go by that.
You got a note, you got a thing from Dan that told you exactly what it was.
Yeah, because it wasn't, yeah, it actually, it wasn't even a missing receipt.
When the statement for the charge came in, it was not there. You got an email from Dan Selman telling you why it was missing and what it was. You did get that.
Through the chair.
And I guess I wish you would call and talk to somebody before and try, instead of always trying to embarrass people at board meetings.
Well, it's happened to me. People try to embarrass me at board meetings, okay?
Okay. Alright, hold on.
This needs to be bought to the public because the public...
Let's have some order here.
...what's going on.
Okay, 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 okay. It's Trustee Miller's turn. She's been waiting calmly. Thank you.
I understand how you're going through a parking garage. You don't get a receipt. Sometimes I don't kick out the little, the little tab.
Usually, she always does.
So you call the gate attendant, which you did. He gave you whatever he felt like giving, but you matched it up with a credit card receipt. Problem solved. If there was an issue, Trustee White had an issue with it, which he clearly does, and he should, he should have come to you and had this discussion prior to this meeting. That being said, let's get, move on to the furniture. So you bought a, what, a conference table? Okay, and how much was that?
The conference table, okay. We purchased, we purchased all new office equipment...
Uh-huh.
...throughout the entire building for any office that still had 25-year-old office equipment in it. They all got new furniture. This, this furniture was part of our office, so there was more than that, far more than that.
Alright. Thank you for that explanation. Yes, I, I understand the high cost of furniture. Let me tell you, I had to replace my furniture in my home kitchen table, Costco, on sale, $1,800. Sticker shock. I don't replace furniture because it's so costly. Living room, living room furniture art, Van Clarence Center, $2,800. I didn't even get the ottoman because I didn't want to pay the extra money. So I don't think this furniture, being 25 years old for the price that you paid, is out of range based on today's cost with furniture. It's a 300% markup on it. I know, I go out, I have to shop. If any of you have bought any type of furniture within the last few years, you'll understand that. So let me ask you this. What, what's happening with all the excess furniture chairs? What did you do with it? It was a lot of furniture. And your office does look nice, so, but where's it going?
The old stuff, most, all of the old desks have been thrown out.
Why wouldn't you have, why wouldn't you have an auction?
Because they're, because they were falling apart as they were. I mean, quite frankly, we're all sitting in these little holes over here.
The school district...
These pistons don't work.
The school district, they have poor furniture, too, that they've used for 25, 30 years, and they put together an auction, and they sell a lot of the stuff at an auction. You never know what people will buy.
You do with your cars.
I'm not sure where we would put all that, but, you know, actually, I do know where I'd put it. I'd put it at the golf course if we ever get that thing done. But, um...
We've got plenty of room.
All the chairs that were in decent shape, we have saved all the chairs, all the tables, we've saved, we've saved all the file cabinets. We've got file cabinets coming out of our ears.
And are those going to be auctioned?
Yes, we're going to get rid of that. We're going to offer them to local charities and schools and whatever else first. Whatever doesn't go, we're going to auction.
And the stuff that you move that falls apart, you go, you just dump, put it in the dumpster?
Yeah, it was, there was a lot of specialty stuff that was, that was falling apart because one piece didn't work, and then the rest of it wasn't going to work. Treasurer Bud?
Through the chair, also, they were not desks, like when you think of a school desk. These were desks that when they come apart, they had to be in fifty pieces.
Right.
I don't know how, because they either had to break some of the screws to get them apart. So there was a strip here, there was a piece like this, and then there was another piece that was connected by this. There was that fuzzy material, I call it, on all of the desks. And most of that was not worth, because you could never put it together. Even if you'd have bought it at auction, you could have never figured out how to put that together.
You could, you could have filled up a mason jar in each office with the screws we found laying around underneath these desks before we took them apart. So they were really falling apart.
I, I, oh.
Just, uh, clerk, right, sorry.
I have to agree with what they just said. If you take that furniture apart, it's different. You get the people that are replacing the furniture, when they're putting it together, they have a blueprint to put it together. Because it's, it's the way it's designed. And once you take it apart, unless you've got every working piece, you just, you can't work with it. Like you said, the file cabinets and stuff like that, we maybe do something with it, we can. And just, while I have the table, I'd like to reiterate on the expenditure, how that works. Like Sherry said, when you ask for a reimbursement, you have, you have to have a receipt in order to get a reimbursement if you go somewhere. That was a different scenario when you go, when you ask and you get a receipt, you're spending to make that expense. You ask for a receipt for reimbursement, you have to have, show proof that you spent it in order to get reimbursement. The reason that we need receipts to match up with the credit card is for audit purposes. When the auditor comes in, which is, they're coming in in about another, another couple of weeks, when they come in, they pull random receipts to make sure that we are adherent to the policies that we set as a board, which is our purchases and credit card policy. So they look at our credit card policy and they pull random receipts to make sure that the township is adherent to its policies. And if you're not, if you pull a receipt and don't have, a, a credit card statement and don't have every receipt to match it, then you have an issue. They'll come to me and ask me what's, why we're not adherent to our own policies. That's why we need a re, that's why we need a receipt for all-
Yeah, that would be a finding, and we have never had a finding, at least not three years ago.
We haven't. So that's why we have to have receipts. And if we don't have the receipts, we have to make sure that we make a notation why we don't have receipts. A notation was made. Email was sent to us by Dan Selman indicating what happened with that transition and why the receipt wasn't-
It's in your E B.
Was in it for the, uh, for the parking replacement. So it's all, it all matches up.
But I question twenty-five dollars for parking? How long were you in there, an hour, two hours? Usually parking downtown is ten dollars.
No, it's not. No, it's, it's-
Even at the airport, it's-
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it's really, really expensive. You know, okay, um, I, I'd tell you a story about that, but I won't.
Okay.
Um, okay, so I need, um, we already have a motion and we have support. Here are no further questions, all in favor?
I have one further question.
Okay.
The only thing that I have to go by is what is on the prepaid list or the voucher list.
Mm-hmm.
And I have to go by that.
Okay.
And I, I go by my past experience when I was denied two dollars and fifty cents. It's no big deal to me now. And, and also on, on the desk and everything else. This is a problem when we have a nine-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar CIP program. And I'm not gonna vote for a CIP program anymore because I'm gonna have these individual items bought to us as individual items as to how they're spent. And in that way, we'll know how much money's being spent. And we'll know exactly what it was for. When we give you almost a million dollars in a CIP program for renovation of township hall, you can do almost anything you want to do. Really. And I will never vote for another CIP program. I want to see individual charges, individual diagrams, because we don't, didn't know half of what was going on in this township on renovations and everything else that, that went on. And that's, that's not proper because we are in charge of the money. It's our only responsibility is to make sure, or our major responsibility, is to make sure that our taxpayers' dollars are spent appropriately. I'm done.
Thank you. Most communities like Plymouth Township, Northville Township, Canton Township, when it came time to redo their administration buildings, they built new ones. We didn't even think that way. We went immediately for the least intrusive act on the taxpayer, which was renovating what we had and making it work. And we did that, that's what we did.
Supervisor, our average home, uh, purchase, homeowner in township, those wages don't compare with Northville Township. Northville Township is a very rich township, has a lot of very expensive homes. Canton has ninety thousand residents, we have thirty, thirty-one thousand residents. There is no way to compare us with townships that are larger than we are, have a higher taxable base than we do.
We are identical to Plymouth Township. Population, we're a little bit bigger, but our tax receipts, our, our net worth-
Medium income?
Medium, well, the, medium income has nothing to do with it, it's how much taxes do you collect?
It does, it's-
And it, it has to do with the fact that their, 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 uh, their taxable value is identical to ours.
You, you interrupted me, I didn't say something, that's okay. When was Plymouth Township's hall built?
Uh, ten years ago.
When?
Ten years ago.
I think it was earlier than that.
Maybe five years ago?
No.
You got that brand-new one, I know you're doing-
Brand spanking new, big one.
Yep.
So, and we never even considered that. We, it wasn't even the cars, we just wanted to fix what we had. We have invested nothing but capital in, capital input into infrastructure of the township. Leaks, fire, dispatch, this building, uh, our sewer systems, uh, we did, our, our pavilions, uh, some of our parks. We built one park out, a splash park.
Twenty-five-hundred-dollar desk.
Eighteen-hundred-dollar kitchen table, I mean, that's what things cost.
May, maybe if we could have a breakdown of how much of the million dollars went to this building, uh, went to, you know?
The million dollars went almost exclusively into this building. In fact, exclusively, there wasn't a dime spent outside of this building.
You just said that-
There was nothing.
You just said-
Over the last three years, we've done nothing but invest in-
So we spent a million dollars in here? Could we have a, a summary of what we spent the million dollars on here?
You've gotten it throughout the year.
Make a motion, call for the-
Before that, I'd like to make one more comment.
Okay, well, it's, no, actually, you can't, this is not even debatable, learn that. We have a motion called, question, we have, uh, support. Uh, it's roll call vote, though I found out that, interestingly enough, clerk. We're calling the question.
Yes, we're calling the question, is a roll call vote, though, yeah.
Did, my, my question is, did she have the floor?
You gotta do a roll call.
Was she recognized on the floor?
Was she rec-
Treasurer, bud?
Apparently.
Yeah?
Trustee White.
Trustee Frazier?
Yes.
Trustee Murray?
What are we speaking on?
Yes.
Yes.
Give me the mic, give me the mic.
Okay, you don't get the mic. The question's called, all in favor of, um, of the voucher list, of the prepaid voucher list? Say aye. Aye, opposed?
No.
Roll call vote for item six.
No, you called the question and a roll call. Yes. No.
Trustee Murray, yes, yes to me?
Yes.
Yes.
No.
No.
Okay, thank you. Moving on, we have, uh, reports. Uh, please note that the October twenty-nineteen budgetary, the November twenty-nineteen budgetary reports are in there. Next item is public comment for non-agenda items. Anybody wishing can step forward, you have three minutes, sir.
What? Three and two, and first of all, I'm smoking that. Because number one, I'm looking at everybody in here, this, this is a carry-on from the work study, which was BS two that I'm calling here.
What?
But I broke, I broke speed limit laws in five different cities and two counties because I had to leave here from the garbage that I heard during the work study. This all has to do with the times and the meetings, because the way you guys are setting these meetings up, public can't get here if they work for a living. I work eighty to a hundred-and-twenty hours a week and have been doing it for six, since June. I came here to try to do something at four-thirty or four o'clock. And then you squished this thing together between the work study and this meeting. So I had to break these rules to get here and missed everything, couldn't get to the public comment to talk about something. Something's gotta change, and something's going to when I retire, because I'm gonna be riding these doors as a politician. You're not giving the public any time. And like I said, there's only one resident in here, one speaker in here from DTE and myself, because you don't give anybody any time to come into this building to talk. You moved it from seven-thirty to some, not you, but I'm saying in twenty years, it's gone from seven-thirty to seven o'clock to six o'clock. Why don't you have these meetings at nine o'clock like they do at Wayne County and Detroit? And just forget about the public and just do it as your job during the daytime? Because you're not giving the public any time to come in here and talk about anything because I just proved it by breaking all these speed limits, to go to Farmington Hills to drop off a company car, to run the Livonia line on my team, and then get here to try to talk about something that started an hour ago. This is BS, and this board needs to start thinking about it. It's an election year coming up and things need to change. Because you're not letting the public talk up here, you're shoving it together. Yeah, you guys work here eight hours a day and you want to get things crushed together so you can go home, but what about Joe Blow and John Doe and John Smith that wants to get here and talk about something? We can't, because we have to break laws to get here. That's BS. Now, I'm gonna move on to the non, the, you had something on your agenda, but I, like I said, I couldn't get here. Legally, I couldn't get here to talk under the public comment for your business that you talked about through a presentation. Because it came through the work study that nobody was here. I came to talk about the signs, which I'm pretty sure you already approved and you're gonna push it through. But we had one trustee that said they would like to see something else. Now, I call foul because I thought I heard somebody say that it was twenty thousand dollars for the study to get somebody to show you some renderings on the wall. Is that not true, supervisor? Was there an expense for that company?
Their sales, twelve thousand.
Okay, twelve thousand. If it was more than five hundred, you got hosed. You know why? Because what I heard in that work study was that a company said you can only do it one way or the highway. Are you gonna tell me, in your maturity and driving around, that you've never seen a sign that was from top down that you read, where the letters were vertical and you read them down? Because according to what I heard in the work study, the company showed you some renderings that says it just wouldn't work. That it would only work one way, that you had to read it sideways, because if you change the fonts around, it just doesn't work. So you're telling me there's not one sign in this United States that reads from the top down? I cry foul again. So you rushed something through, you had a contractor come in, then a sign company, didn't know nothing. I just got an email that what was gonna be on the agenda, because nobody knows what's going on in this township unless they read it from the paper record or they get an email setting on an agenda. Again, there's not transparency. This happened twelve years ago. This happened under a different administration, before Paul White, before Linda Coles and before you. You're getting back into full circle where there's gonna be some major problems because this economy's not gonna go great for another twelve years. It's got maybe four years left. And we're gonna have some problems, because you guys are spending like drunken sailors and you're putting away some money for a rainy day, but you're not putting away enough money. Because I've been in this township since nineteen sixty-two, I've seen it come and go, and come and go, and come and go. And you guys are crying foul and doing all this and that and the other when we run out of money. And we're gonna be running out of money again real soon. We saw this twelve years ago, we saw it ten years ago. Paul White had to scrimp and script save and whatever, I'm not giving him any kudos either way because the morale in this township hall was terrible, but he did save some money. But since then, it's being spent like drunken sailors. So beware that the storm is coming. And it's been printed before that I said that, four or five years ago. It keeps evolving. But you guys are spending way too much money and you're putting lipstick on a pig. Because I remember when this building was a square blue metal building that my mom was the head of the water department in the sixties and seventies, and it's still the same building, you just keep putting lipstick on it. You keep adding out. But all these other communities got really nice stuff, Angster, Dearborn Heights, Canton. But you keep putting lipstick on a pig on this stuff. It's terrible. I, I see the work you spent out here and I'm hearing millions of dollars? My gosh, I'm in that construction field. You got hosed on this deal. Back to the dance floor out there. When you put the dance floor and you changed things in the mind, you said, "Well, I'm tired of the building, but we're gonna still spend a hundred thousand dollars for this dance floor addition." So I'm venting right now, because I have been working eighty to a hundred-and-twenty hours a week since June, so I can't get here. But by golly, when I retire, I'm gonna be so far up your guys' armpits on this stuff. And some of you have got re-elected, some of you have been around for a little while, and some of you probably need to go. But at the end of the day, you're falling back into the same old, the same old Groundhog Day stuff that I've seen for the last twenty-five years here. You need to let the residents talk here and they need to get here at a certain amount, with a certain amount of time. Because guess what? When I said I was working two shifts, and I'll, I'll wrap this up, I had to leave here, go to Farmington Hills, then to Livonia and then back, two different positions, two different jobs. That means that if I worked days, I couldn't make it unless I was in management. Because at four o'clock, anybody working nine to five, uh, you're gonna leave work to come? Then if you're working the afternoon shift, three to eleven, boom, can't make it then. So you're not really leaving it open for the public to come in and talk. Yes, we elected you, you're supposed to be making the decisions, but you don't give us a chance to talk. It's made for failure. You're setting it up for failure because the residents can't get here. And like I said, how many residents are in here now? Now, there may be residents here that work here, but there's no public here. And if I polled this, uh, our town crier over there, Rosemary, how many residents come here? It's only when the place is on fire that somebody's been coming in in the last, since you changed these times. You need to rethink those times to allow people to come in. You need to put stuff on the, on the website that I don't even know, since Ally's gone, I don't know what the heck's going on in this township anymore. Whether the website, uh, um, Nixal, whatever. This township doesn't tell anybody what the heck it's doing unless it's underwater or a plane's gonna crash in it. Get your stuff together and allow the residents to start talking, because there's gonna be a new sheriff in town soon.
Thank you.
Through the chair?
Uh, Trustee Maria.
Regarding Mr. Delaney's comments, let me ask you this. Has there been any other complaints from any other residents about the times of our meeting?
No.
And did we have any more residents at seven o'clock than what we do at six o'clock?
No.
So you had no residents at seven o'clock?
We didn't have any residents coming into the meetings for a long time.
So there hasn't been any complaints from residents saying that they can't get here to-
Not a single complaint.
I'll run an ad in Rosemary's paper and pay for it, and we'll do a poll to find out what's going on in the township so you guys can hear it. And I'll pay for it.
I'm fine, I mean, do, do, if you wanna do that, go ahead.
Well, you're not gonna do it. It's not gonna go out in some water bill or a flyer from the clerk or someone says, "Hey, are you happy or even aware of what's going on in the township? Would you like to know what's going on?"
Actually, that we did do.
Yeah, and, and you got something for monkey service or whatever.
No, we didn't. We went epic M R A on that. Uh, and, and, and right now, residents are seventy-six percent pretty happy.
Because Trump's in office and there's not a problem.
Which is like, really, really good.
Wait till people are on the work-
Seventy-six percent approval rating.
Right.
So-
Even with Trump, there's that much approval rating, but what I'm saying is, when things are bad, you're gonna hear about it. That's where recalls come from and arguments and everything else, when things go bad.
Okay, uh, yeah, all right, uh, yeah, where are we at?